Before we begin tonight's board meeting, Kami Johnson, an eighth grade student from Harry Hurst Middle School, will lead us in a moment of reflection before the pledge. Kami is a member of the Hurst volleyball team, basketball team, and softball team, and participates in track and field. She is also a concert and symphonic band member, an honor band member, and has been an honor roll student for multiple years. Let's see, academics check, arts check, and athletics check. Kami is a AAA student in our AAA district. After the moment of reflection, Mrs. Melinda Bernard will lead in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
May everyone bow their heads for a moment of prayer. Father God, thank you for the privilege of coming before you in prayer today. On this special occasion, I want to pray for the school board as they let you guide them to do the work you have called them to do, representing the people that elected them to serve. I pray that you give them the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to make decisions that honor you and do good for everyone under your leadership. Thank you for boards at every level, schools, students, parents, teachers, administrators, other staff members, and for hearing and answering my prayer because I asked. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America through the power of our justice, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just.
Thank you, Kami, and thank you, Mrs. Bernard. This meeting of the Board for the St. Charles Parish Public Schools is called to order. For the record, all eight board members are in attendance this evening. Also in attendance is Superintendent Dr. Ken Ordling and Mrs. Shelley Babino, Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent. First items on the agenda for this evening are three proclamations, starting with item 2.01, the 2022 Arts in Our Schools Month proclamation. Mr. Robichaud, would you present that proclamation?
It'd be my pleasure. The 2022 Arts in Our Schools Month proclamation. Whereas the arts taught in St. Charles Parish Public Schools include music, visual art, dance, and theater; and whereas March 2022 has been designated as Music in Our Schools Month by the National Association of Music Education, National Youth Art Month by the National Art Education Association, and National Theater in Our Schools Month by the American Alliance for Theater and Education. And whereas education in the arts contributes powerful benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students by enabling students to become artistically literate citizens who use a variety of artistic media to independently create and perform work that expresses and communicates their own ideas, finds at least one arts discipline in which they develop sufficient compliance to continue active involvement in creating, performing, and responding to art as an adult, know and understand artwork from varied historical periods and cultures, and actively seek and appreciate diverse forms and genres of artwork of enduring in quality and significance, and find joy in inspiring peace, intellectual stimulation, meaning, and other life-enhancing qualities through participating in all of the arts. Seek artistic experience and support the arts in their local, state, national, and global communities. And whereas the 15th Annual Arts Fest will be celebrated on Saturday, March 19, 2022, at the Dr. Rodney R. Lefon Performing Arts Center with artistic performances in music, visual arts, dance, theater, and media arts for the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, in conjunction with the above-mentioned national organizations, hereby proclaim March 2022 as St. Charles Parish Public Schools Arts in Our Schools Month and urge all citizens to take interest in and give full support to quality school programs in the musical, visual, dance, and theatrical arts for children and youth, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. President. I'd like to invite Mr. Josh Martin, Coordinator of Gifted, Talented, and the Arts, to say a few words.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. I'm Joshua Martin, Coordinator of Gifted, Talented, and the Arts for the school district. I want to sincerely thank the Board and the Superintendent for continuing the annual tradition of naming March as Arts in Our Schools Month. In yet another year of unprecedented events that have drastically reduced instructional time, our teachers have continued to rise to the occasion of instilling creativity in our students and challenging their artistry, creating impassioned work like never before. The arts have and will continue to serve as a beacon of hope for so many, including you and me. The district's celebration of Arts in Our Schools Month will culminate in our 15th Annual Arts Fest on Saturday, March 19, beginning at 10:00 a.m. at the Lefon Arts Center. We invite you and the rest of the community to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 2.02, 2022 Louisiana's Retired Teachers Day Proclamation. Mr. Nakian, would you present that proclamation, please?
Mr. President, it'd be my pleasure. 2022 Louisiana's Retired Teachers Day Proclamation. Whereas Louisiana's retired teachers have devoted their careers to the education and training of tens of thousands of Louisianians; and whereas Louisiana's retired teachers have provided jobs and social skills training for adults throughout the state; and whereas Louisiana's retired teachers have rendered valuable services in diverse leadership roles to their communities and institutions throughout their careers and continue to render such services as retirees; and whereas Louisiana's retired teachers represent the profession which is given the basic responsibility for launching the careers of state and national leaders and for laying the foundation for the welfare of all members of our society; and whereas Louisiana's retired teachers have toiled ceaselessly to improve the quality of life in the state and nation, often in less than adequate circumstances and for less than adequate pay; and whereas Louisiana's retired teachers represent a tremendous pool of experience and training which remains dedicated to the betterment of society everywhere; and whereas Louisiana's retired teachers represent a loyal, patriotic, and concerned citizenry which provides a dedicated and dependable support to the leaders in our communities, states, and nations. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, do hereby proclaim March 17, 2022 as Retired Teachers Day. And, Mr. President, I move that we approve the 2022 Louisiana Retired Teachers Day Proclamation.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Okwane. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 2.03, Black History Month Proclamation. Mr. Alexander, would you please present that proclamation?
Yes, Mr. President. It's both an honor and a privilege to do so. The 2022 Louisiana... Oh, I'm on the wrong page. The 2022 Black History Month Proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the value of the vast contributions of Black Americans to our nation's culture, economy, history, and identity. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by author, historian, and journalist Carter G. Woodson for the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. In 1976, our nation's bicentennial, President Gerald R. Ford officially recognized Black History Month, urging Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every era, every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas the 2022 national theme for our observance is Black people's health and wellness. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public School System is deeply committed to equity and inclusion, this stance supports the cultural and racial affirmation of all students, staff, parents, and community members who identify as Black. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public School System strives to close the equity and outcome gaps for Black students through policies and practices that improve the experiences of Black students and show greater access and opportunity and honor history, heritage, and contributions; and whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population, now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish Public School Board, hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month and urge all citizens to celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of Black Americans to our diverse community, state, and nation, and our schools, not only during Black History Month, but throughout the school year. And I move that we accept this proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to say a few words. St. Charles Parish Public Schools is proudly, as Mr. Alexander said, committed to equity and inclusion, including the cultural and racial affirmation of our students, staff, parents, and community. This month, our schools celebrate Black History Month with programs, announcements, and activities aligned to celebrating our Black Americans and their contributions to our nation's history. As former President Barack Obama proclaimed, every American can draw strength from the story of hard-won progress which not only defines the African-American experience, but also lies at the heart of our nation's history. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Ordling. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.01 is the Board and Superintendent's recognition.
Students. Destrehan High School students were selected to represent Louisiana in the Presidential Scholars Program. Kaylee Carrigey. Alexis Ellis. And Owen Garda-Bled. Destrehan High School students were named to the Volleyball All-District First Team. Riley Boine, who was also named the Most Valuable Player. Skylar DeFrisco. And Kara Morton. Employees. Central Office employee received grants totaling $70,000 from Chevron North America Exploration and Production Company for robotics teams and for training materials and equipment for Project Lead the Way. Ronnie Seal, and representing Chevron tonight, is Leah Brown. Central Office employee received grants totaling $55,000 from John Dear for development of the Project Lead the Way Engineering and Computer Science Programs at Destrehan High School. Ronnie Seal, and with John Dear representatives, Process Pro-Quality Engineer Bill Ridgeway and Product Engineer Logan Hallbrook. School system employees received grants from Energy's Waterford III totaling $45,000 for robotics and education partnership. I would like to invite Waterford Site Vice President John Farrick, Operations Director Jared Clavel, and Communications Specialist Adrian Boujot to join each of the recipients for a picture. First, Mimosa Park Elementary School, represented by Principal Angela Butler. Destrehan High School Robotics, with Director, Coach Brian Young. And Honville High School Robotics, represented by their coach, director, sponsor, Richard Fitzgerald. Teams. Destrehan High School's Dusty Darlings Dance Team earned fourth place in the Nation for Hip-Hop and the title of National Champion and Game Day at the Universal Dance Association's 2022 National Dance Team Championship. Please direct your attention to the screen to see this phenomenal team in action.
Go out and give the best performance of your life. No regrets. This is where you earn your white jacket, right in this moment. No regrets. Come off crying of happy tears. I love y'all. Have the most fun. Got it? I love y'all.
Love you.
Make me proud. All right, let's do this.
Your Small Game Day national champs are Destrehan High School.
Please join me in congratulating Coaches McKay Voges and Leila Ruffin and the Destrehan National Champion, Dusty Darlings.
The next item on the agenda is 3.02, its retirement recognition. Annually, the School Board and Superintendent recognize retired employees who have contributed many years of service to the St. Charles Parish Public School System. The President and other Board and the Superintendent will present gifts of appreciation to each retiree.
Congratulations for many years of service and a job well done, Ms. Bernice Aguilar. Ms. Rebecca Berthelot. Ms. Lisa Berg. Ms. Viola Castillo. Ms. Marion Claymore. Ms. Diane Duprah. Ms. Carlina Guillory. Mr. Donald Harris. Ms. Michelle Hills. Ms. Susan Keller. Ms. Claire Mayer. Amen. Well done. Ms. Dorothy Mohang. Ms. Cynthia Morentine. Ms. Susan Muller. Mr. Andre Rome. Mr. Michael Silva. Mr. Orvet Smith. Ms. Martha Mott Soulay. Well done, they're well done. Ms. Catherine Van Hus. Ms. Vicky Vasmer. Ms. Sheila Viknair. Ms. Mary Walker. Ms. Dorothy Watson. Ms. Geraldine Williams. And Ms. McKay Voges.
No problem.
McKay, we were gonna vote against it. McKay, we didn't vote yet.
First of all, to the retirees, on behalf of the Board, congratulations and thank you. I mentioned earlier, collectively, this group of retirees represents 1,419 years of service. You have helped, again, you have helped lay a solid foundation for our district, and you've impacted our students in a positive way, so we thank you for that. And best wishes in your retirement years. As far as the other recognitions tonight, again, on behalf of the Board, congratulations to those students, employees, and National Championship team that received special recognition this evening. Your accomplishments bring distinction to the district and make us extremely proud. So, again, congratulations. And we encourage y'all to keep up the good work. At this time, we'll take a short recess, and we'll reconvene in 2 to 3 minutes to handle the business portion of the meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session, and we will handle the business portion of the agenda. First item on the business portion of the meeting is Item 4.01, which are minutes from the January 14, 2022 Board Retreat, January 24, 2022 Committee Meetings, and January 26, 2022 Regular Board Meeting. Move approval to accept all the minutes from the January 14, 2022 Board Retreat, January 24, 2022 Committee Meeting, and January 26, 2022 Regular Board Meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, second, and by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.02, Renewal of Dental and Vision Insurance. Humana Dental Insurance is offered to District employees as one of the voluntary employee benefit plans available through payroll deduction. Current plans are in effect until April 30, 2022. Humana's renewal includes no rate increase. The Dental Insurance Renewal Plan from Humana will provide employees with the opportunity to continue to purchase dental insurance at competitive rates. The current vision plan is in effect until April 30, 2022. The vision insurance plan from Humana will provide employees with the opportunity to continue to purchase vision insurance at competitive rates. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move we approve Humana as the Dental and Vision Insurance Providers to the District, and this cost is to be paid by the employees.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Okwen, second, and by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.03, Health Insurance Third-Party Administrator. The District's Health Insurance Broker, U.S.I., received proposals for a third-party administrator to facilitate the District's Health Insurance Self-Funded Plan. Approval of Humana as the third-party administrator for health insurance provides the District with high-quality services for the most reasonable cost. The Board will also consider the distribution of the plan rate increase between the District and employees. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move approval of Humana as a third-party administrator for health insurance at a projected cost of $28,407,761.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Okwen, second, and by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.04, Architect Selection for the Hanville Learning Center Demolition Project. The Hanville Learning Center property sustained significant damage due to Hurricane Ida. The cost to repair the property exceeds the amount of insurance proceeds that will be reimbursed to the District. The demolition of the Hanville Learning Center property at 626 Pine Street, Hanville, Louisiana, was approved by the Board at the January 26, 2022 Board Meeting. At this time, it is appropriate to select an architect to study design options for this project. Murray Architects LLC is recommended to provide this service. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the selection of Murray Architects LLC to study the design options for the demolition of the Hanville Learning Center. That property is located at 626 Pine Street in Hanville.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, second, and by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would also like to add that the approximate cost on that architectural or engineering service is $27,500.
Thank you, Mr. Nakian. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.05, Bid Acceptance for the Destrahan High School and Hanville High School Stadium Lights. On Thursday, February 10, 2022, bids were received from three contractors for the Destrahan High School and Hanville High School Stadium Lights project. The lowest base bid was received from All-Star Electrical, Inc. in the amount of $1,152,920. According to the engineer, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting a lowest base bid from All-Star Electrical, Inc. will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the base bid from All-Star Electric, Inc. for the Destrahan High School and Hanville High School Stadium Light projects.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, second, and by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.06, St. Charles Parish Council on Aging Lease Agreement Termination. The Hanville Learning Center property sustained significant damage due to Hurricane Ida, and the Board approved demolition of this property. The Council on Aging has leased the property, and due to the damage sustained to this property, they are operating from an alternate location. The District is seeking to terminate the current lease agreement with the Council on Aging. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request to terminate the current lease agreement with the St. Charles Parish Council on Aging.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, second, and by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion on this item? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.07, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel items. Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, second, and by Mr. Okwen. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.08, Revisions to Policy 5.83, Property Disposal for a Second Reading and Adoption. Upon review of Board Policy 5.83, Property Disposal, revisions were required in order to reflect a recent change in state law. Board Policy 5.83, Property Disposal, was accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, January 26, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the revisions to Board Policy 5.83, Property Disposal for a Second Reading and Adoption.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, second, and by Mr. Okwen. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.09, Revisions to Policy 4.63, Drug-Free Work Environment for Second Reading and Adoption. Upon review of Board Policy 4.63, Drug-Free Work Environment, significant revisions were required as recommended by Forthought Consulting, Inc. significant revisions were required as recommended by Forthought Consulting, Inc. Board Policy 4.63, drug-free work environment, was accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, January 26th, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the revisions to Board Policy 4.63, drug-free work environment for a second reading and adoption.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.10, revisions to Policy 4.05, nepotism for a first reading. During the 2021 session of the Louisiana Legislature, Act 199 was approved, requiring an exception to the Ethics Code to allow an immediate family member of a school board member or superintendent to be employed as a certified bus, school bus operator. After reviewing current law, addition revision, additional revisions were required. Revisions to Policy 4.05, nepotism, reflect these new requirements. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14th, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the revisions to Board Policy 4.05, nepotism for a first reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. Okuan. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.11, fiscal year 2023 Head Start Budget. The Board approves supplemental allocations of funds to support the Head Start program. The Head Start budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, is proposed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14th, 2022, and is aligned with Goal A of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move approval of the proposed fiscal year 23 Head Start budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion?
I should add, it's at a cost of $1,166,993.33.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.12, bid authorization requests, janitorial and paper supplies. The distribution center is tasked with supplying janitorial and paper supplies to all district buildings, schools, and departments. In order to provide the highest quality products at the best price, the district is seeking bids for janitorial and paper supplies. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14th, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid authorization request for janitorial and paper supplies.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.13, requests for proposals, fiscal agent agreement for banking services. Capital One Bank has served as the school board's fiscal agent for the past 21 years. The school board's agreement with Capital One Bank will expire June 30th, 2022. Therefore, it would be prudent to solicit proposals from eligible banks for fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2025. Authorization of the requests for proposals will allow administration to release the requests for proposals to local banks and enable selection to begin at a timely manner. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14th, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request to solicit proposals for fiscal agent for the period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.14, accounts payable for the month of January 2022. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, February 14th, 2022, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of January 2022 for a total cost of $5,655,038.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. Nakian. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. We now move into closing items, beginning with item 5.01, standing committee reports. Any chair of a standing committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday, reviewed five items. Two of those items were for committee meeting only. Those two items were the Hanville High School and Deshran High School renovation and addition updates for our gyms. The three additional items that were reviewed were the architect and engineer selections for the Hanville Learning Center demolition project, the, the request for bids with Deshran and Hanville lighting, and the St. Charles Parish Council on Aging Lease Agreement. Those three items were presented at the Board table tonight and favorably approved. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakian.
Mr. President, the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee met on Monday, February 14th. We had one item on our agenda, and that was the allocation of funds to support the Head Start program. That was approved earlier this evening, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard.
Mr. President, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee met on Monday, and we had a legal update by our attorneys. Also, we had an employee voluntary benefits presentation by AGM in which they proposed voluntary insurance that will be available to our employees with much greater coverage at a less cost, which is a good thing these days. We also had the renewal of dental and vision insurance, which was brought to the table tonight and approved, and we also approved the health insurance third-party administrator tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Okuan.
Mr. President, the Policy and Personnel Committee met on Monday night and discussed the four items, actual personnel items, revisions to Policy 5.83, Policy 4.63, revisions to Policy 4.05, and these were just been brought aboard at this evening's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savoy. The Finance and Audit Committee also met on Monday, February 14th and covered five items. Three of those items came to the full Board during this meeting and were approved. Those three items were the bid authorization request for janitorial and paper supplies, the requests for proposals for fiscal agent agreement for banking services, and accounts payable for the month of January 2022. We had two other items for committee discussion only, and those two items were our internal auditor, Mr. Adam Neighbors, gave us a report on the audits of our student activity funds, and also our chief financial officer, Mr. Ronald White, gave us a report on our Hurricane Ida recovery costs and cash flow projections. And that concludes my, my committee report. At this time, we move to item 5.02, which is our superintendent's report. Dr. Ortley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kindergarten registration for St. Charles Parish Public Schools is now open. Children who will be five years old by September 30th, 2022, are eligible to register for kindergarten. Parents' guardians can currently register using the link under District News on the St. Charles Parish Public Schools website, or may do so in person at the school in their attendance zone from March 7th through the 11th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Students registering online or in person by March 11th will be administered the kindergarten screener at an assigned time later in the spring. Children currently enrolled in the St. Charles Parish Public Schools pre-K or Head Start program do not need to register for kindergarten since they are already enrolled in the school system. Pre-kindergarten registration for three- and four-year-olds is now open too. Eligibility and placements are based on age, residential area, and income, and are not awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. Students must be three or four years of age on or before September 30th, 2022, to be eligible to attend. Applications can be submitted online or by completing the paper application. The online link can be accessed under District News on the St. Charles Parish Public Schools website. Paper applications can be picked up from Carver Early Learning Center, East Bank Head Start, all elementary schools, and the school board office. Free transportation is provided for students enrolled in the four-year-old program. The computer-based format of the ACT will be administered on March 8th, 2022, to all 11th-grade students and some seniors. All 10th graders will take the pre-ACT on the same day, March 8th. Students not taking either of these tests will participate in asynchronous learning on this day. Additional information relative to ACT testing and asynchronous learning will be shared by both HHS and DHS. Please contact your child's school for additional information. Please contact your child's school for further information relative to upcoming LEAP 2025 assessments and schedules. The visual art gallery will open to the public from Saturday, March 12th, through Sunday, March 20th, at the LaFond Performing Arts Center. A ceremony honoring the student artists chosen from each school site for the superintendent's gallery will be held Thursday, March 17th, in the Library of the LaFond Center. As mentioned earlier, in celebration of March, as arts in our schools month, the 15th Annual St. Charles Parish Public Schools Arts Fest will take place Saturday, March 19th, at the Dr. Rodney R. LaFond Performing Arts Center, beginning at 10 a.m. The day's festivities will feature artistic representations from each school site, including installations of visual art pieces from art programs, this year's superintendent's visual art gallery entries, a performance from this year's middle school parish honor band, presentations by school choirs, talented theater cast, and the Satellite Center's dance and technical theater classes. We welcome the community to join us on March 19th as we continue to celebrate and showcase the learning and growth taking place. And finally, the St. Charles Parish Public School system is conducting a surf, search, for staff achievement award nominees. One staff member from nine various categories will be selected for recognition at the Staff Achievement Awards Program to be held in April. The deadline to submit a nomination is Monday, March 28th, 2022. Nomination forms will be available on the district's website. For more information, contact the Public Information Department. Please join me in recognizing the employees who demonstrate that you and I, we are St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ortley.
Move adjourn? Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We stand adjourned.